Paul Mary?
Here.
Muggerauer?
Aye, here.
Crowsey?
Here.
Pack?
Herman?
Here.
Allison Osby?
Here.
Cummings?
Here.
Present six.
Would you all please stand while Deputy Mayor of Pal Mary leads us in invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
As we gather tonight, we're grateful for the good things that have come to this city. May our decisions always be ones that are for the well-being of whom we govern.
(inaudible)
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 Something for you kids?
Now, this time you can turn and face mom and dad in that corner. I'll start with you Addison, your name, your age, where do you go to school, and your favorite subject.
My name's Addison. I'm 10 years old. I go to Emmeline Cook Elementary School, and my favorite subject is science.
Okay, great. And there's a certificate for you. Andrew?
Um, good afternoon. My name is Andrew. Um, my favorite subject is math, and I go to Oklahon Elementary.
Thank you. Andrew, a certificate for you. And Trina, our Finance Director, we have another math student for you. We've been on a roll last couple of council meetings with math students.
Math is awesome.
So, okay. Thank you, kids. Now, you can stay and watch the meeting, or go home, and do homework. That decision's yours. Thank you. Moving on the agenda, first is a presentation, and I will let, I'll turn this over to Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If Don Lord and Chief Stanley and Firefighter John maybe want to come up as well, we have a little presentation here. Oshkosh Fire Department, Project Safe, which stands for Smoke Alarms for Everyone, is a program where Oshkosh Fire Department personnel will install smoke detectors in homes at no additional charge, or no charge. Residents can call the fire department, or talk to the neighborhood station, and they'll come check existing detectors, and if needed, they'll install new 10-year detectors. Scott, if you wouldn't mind rolling our video?
Do you ever wonder if you have enough working smoke alarms in your house? Well, the Oshkosh Fire Department has a program to make sure that you do. The program is called Project Safe, and that's Smoke Alarm for Everyone. And what that does is, we will come into your house, we will check to make sure you have working smoke alarms on every level of your home. That is the bare minimum. You should have one on every single level of your home, including the basement. And if you do not, we will install them for you free of charge. Or if you have detectors and just not working batteries, we will also replace the batteries free of charge. The detectors we use to replace yours are these detectors right here. They have a 10-year battery, and that means that these will work for 10 years. That is considered a disposable smoke detector, because smoke detectors last about 10 years. So if yours are older than 10 years, you should pitch them and get some new ones as well. Give me a call at 236-5249, and we can make an appointment, and I will come in and make sure that you have the right amount of detectors, that they are working, and if not, I'll replace them for you right there on the spot. It doesn't take much time. It's about a 15-minute deal. We're in, we're out. Just remember that working smoke detectors are your best chance of saving a life in a fire. Your family's safety is in your hands. Take the time, give us a call, and once a month, test your alarm, make sure that it's working, and stay safe.
Thank you, Scott. The effectiveness, effectiveness of this program came to life in November 2017 during the Oshkosh Fire Department's annual October Detector Trek. They installed a smoke detector in a home in the 1200 block of Ontario Street. Shortly after the installation, the house experienced a fire, and that started in the kitchen and spread to the second floor, causing extensive heat and smoke damage. The newly installed detector alerted the person living there, and they were able to safely get out. This is just one of the many great examples of how smoke detectors can save lives, and it's a credit to the Oshkosh Fire Department and their project Safe. All the funding for this project comes from donations. No city tax dollars are used, and in the 10 years that the fire department has been doing this, they've installed almost 800 detectors just before this last October, and maybe Chief Stanley will, will talk about what they were able to accomplish just a few weeks ago. As owners and managers of rental property, I know the members of the Winnebago Apartment Association appreciate and understand the need for functioning smoke detectors. They not only help protect property, they save lives. And with that, I'd like to introduce Don Lord, President, Winnebago Apartment Association. He'll present Chief Stanley with, with a check. Forehand it over. Just want to personally say thanks, Don, for your spearheading the effort. We definitely wouldn't have been able to, to get the funds that we did without your help, so, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. We were very fortunate to raise $2,400. Matt gave us the goal of 1,200, and the reason why we wanted to go over and above that is because you notice in the video, it just said 10-year smoke detectors. And I talked with John earlier this year, and I said, you know, why aren't we doing combination 10-year smoke detectors and CO detectors like this one? And he said the funding wasn't there. So, we wanted to go over and above, so rather than just 10-year smoke detectors, they'll be combinations. And I'm really hoping that we're going to work with the fire department and the Rental Advisory Board, that we might come up with this as a new city ordinance, that when they do need me to replace, which they do have to replace every 10 years anyway, that we would go to 10-year sealed battery units citywide. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. On behalf of the Oshkosh Fire Department, the City of Oshkosh, and certainly the, the community members, we greatly appreciate this donation. It can make so much difference in saving people's lives, and this will enable us this year, coming year or two, install our 1,000th smoke detector.
And again, thank you, Matt and Don, and we have talked about this for years, and you guys have come through, like I knew you would. And it's a huge, I mean, very, very important program that we do, and we were so proud of ourselves when we came up with the name. You would not believe it, and you know, Smoke Alarm for Everyone. Anyway, your donation, we will be able to get, like, the chief said, to our 1,000th detector. The idea of adding the CO is phenomenal, and like you said, we always wanted to, it just wasn't going to happen funding-wise, and now it can. So, we appreciate everything you guys have done, Winnebago Apartment Association, and just having me there every year to talk to the landlords and let them know what we expect. It, it's important to us, and we greatly appreciate it. And thank you very much.
Next on the agenda is citizen statements to council. Citizens are to address the council only. Statements are limited to five minutes. Must address, must address items that are not listed on the council meeting agenda, are limited to issues that have an impact on the City of Oshkosh, and the common council may address at a future meeting, and must not include endorsements of any candidates or other electionary. Pam, has anyone registered to speak?
No one is registered.
Okay, thank you. Then I will move on to consent agenda. These items are of a routine administrative nature that are voted on by the council in a single roll called a vote. Staff recommends approval of all items. Any member of the public or common council may request that an item be removed from the consent, consent agenda for discussion. Pam, did anyone register to vote?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Deputy Mayor Pal Mary?
I just have one item, Mayor, and that's just regarding Resolution 18543 on that approval for the conditional use permit for community living arrangement, the addition of 16 beds for mental health crisis. I just want to say that this is a much-needed resource to be added to the community. So, this was the first time that I heard about this, and I attend a number of the functions in the community regarding mental health. So, this is exciting, that there will be another resource for those in mental health crisis.
Mr. Davis, do you have anything to say?
I agree completely.
Thank you. With that said, I see no other councilmember wishing to discuss anything on the consent agenda, so would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
There were no items removed, removed from the consent agenda, so we'll move on to pending ordinances. The first ordinance is 18-555, repeal and recreate Chapter 24 Wastewater Systems. Pam, did anyone register?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Mr. Herman?
Thank you. Mr. Bryan, just, could you just, just briefly highlight any changes in the ordinance that may be pertinent, or is it just an updating our ordinance to comply with state statutes now?
We hadn't done a study of our pretreatment limits and things like that for over 20 years, so this was just an effort to, to look at those limits again, make sure the limits we had in there. And as noted in the, that the EPA had come up with some new language and pretreatment program for streamlining, and so as part of this whole project, we needed to put the EPA language into our new ordinance in order to make it compatible with their requirements and also meet the DNR requirements. So, it really was an update to get EPA's streamlining language in, and to get our ordinance more current. We really have made no major changes whatsoever.
Okay, so our citizens won't see any real impact in?
It's primarily, it's industrial pretreatment and maybe a few commercials, and there won't be any significant changes in the program as it's been administered in the past.
Okay. I just wanted to let everybody know that, why are we bringing this ordinance back up, that there's any major changes or anything, so, thank you very much.
Yep.
I see no other councilmember wishing to speak. Would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, we have ordinance 556, approve amendment to Section 2-38 in parentheses, A, close parentheses, bid board membership and terms to increase membership to three members. Anyone register? Pam?
No one is registered.
I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
We have one new ordinance, and there will no, there'll be no formal action taken on, on this item this, this evening. It's ordinance 18-557, amend parking lot names, parking regulations, and maps. We have a number of new resolutions. The first is Resolution 18-558, adopt City of Oshkosh Industrial Wastewater Discharge Program Handbook. Did anyone register?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion and a second.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Resolution 18-559, approve pay schedule recommendations, classification assignment list, and corresponding adjustments resulting from the City of Oshkosh Compensation Review for all nonrepresented employees. Pam?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Deputy Mayor Pal Mary?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Fitzpatrick, would you like to just share some of the highlights of this? It looks like we had a little bit of an update come through since the original document.
We did. I apologize for that. When the original documents were sent, and it was my fault, I scanned them without duplexing them, so you didn't have the entire class list. So, I appreciate your indulgence with the update. But, in regard to this project, as some of the council members know, that have been on the council for a little while, we, we periodically take a look at our pay, and this is related to our nonrepresented group, and when we historically used to look at pay, we'd do it, we used to do it every 10 years. Now that because our pay policies are infused with a look at the private sector, it's really important for us to look at it a little more frequently. We do it about every three years now. And HR continually updates those pay schedules as necessary for us to be able to get the employees we need. So, it's really a good thing for us to just have an outsider take a look at it, make sure that we're synced with the market, and give us any suggestions that they may think might be helpful for us, so we can retain our employees and be able to recruit new ones. So, that's really what this is all about. And we are, we're doing a pretty good job, I think, and the lion's share of the credit really is, goes to the council, the fact that they've been very responsible in terms of providing the, the across-the-board raises that have been proposed, have allowed us to stay synced with the market, and that has allowed us to be able to recruit and retain the employees that we need. So, we very much appreciate that.
Just a follow-up question, if I may, and that is, so, maybe for explaining to folks watching this, who may be following along with this, I don't know if it's already been posted out on our website or not, but, so, we typically bring people in at less than market rate. And the question that I had received was, well, why would we do that? Why would we have an increase? And, you know, they, there are also the steps. And, so, maybe you can just talk a little briefly about how we bring them in at less than market rate, so that's kind of a combination.
Sure.
Solution.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Our, our pay structure for nonrepresented employees, employees are kind of a hybrid strategy. There's a step system for a component of the pay grades, and then there's also a performance-based component. And, you're right, Deputy Mayor Pal Mary, when we hire people, we try very much to hire them at the beginning of the range, and that range begins at 87 and a half percent of the market. The control point is, is .6 in our step system, and that's synced to the market for a particular job. So, we, we do our best to try to recruit people and hire them at the beginning steps of our, of each pay grade. The supervisors understand that that's our compensation philosophy, and that it's their responsibility to, to help mentor employees, to train them, to bring them along, to share their information with them, so they can progress. And after a period of time, they annually, if they get a successful performance evaluation, they, they move from one step to the next, and those steps are about 2.5% apart. And then, in addition to that, we also take a look at the entire structure annually, and then recommend an across-the-board increase to make sure that all those classifications are synced to the marketplace. So, that's really it. There's, there's really three components to our pay plan. There's the step system, there's the pay-for-performance, and then there's the across-the-board component to keep it synced to the system, to the, to the marketplace.
Thank you.
Councilman Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. But there's one more part of the equation, though, right? Because we give across-the-board raise, so a person could technically, if they get a 2.5 and then a step, could get a 4, 4.5, 5% raise.
Right.
Based on where they are. So, there's really a...
Actually, I just mentioned that. The across-the-board is the third leg. So, there's the step system, there's the pay-for-performance component, and then there's the across-the-board.
Okay. But, I was going to ask this at the workshop, and I kind of forgot about it. We've been doing this study, I think this is the third or fourth time since I've been on council, our seasonals. Do we do any kind of study to look at kind of across-the-board in, in, say, in the Fox River Valley? You know, we've had trouble hiring seasonals, and part of it is that's at a lot, lower pay scale, obviously. A lot of times, they're only here for two or three months. But in the last few years, we've had some issues getting enough seasonals. The water park doesn't open on time. We've had to close the Lakeview Cafe because we didn't have seasonals. So, have we, to help that situation a little bit, have we done any kind of pay study in, in the area to see if we're competitive? That's, you know, is that a reason why we're not getting them? Because we're not, or just because the job market is that much tighter now?
I think, I think you hit on all those, all the correct answers, actually. I think it's a combination of things. We have adjusted our pay for our seasonal employees in order to try to be able to recruit the proper amount of folks that we need to be able to get the job done recently. And we did have our consultant take a look at that. And in addition to the recommendations that he has, and those are just involving three classifications in the full-time.
Right.
Classification list, he did make mention that as time goes forward, we'll have to monitor the lower ends of our full-time pay grades, but also our seasonals, because it's becoming more and more difficult to recruit employees, not only because of the pay, but you also mentioned it, Councilmember Herman, the supply and demand.
Right.
There's many more jobs than there are people that can fill them, and when that happens, it creates wage pressure. And I anticipate that that's going to continue to take place as time goes on. So, we are looking at it very closely. We try to do what we can to make sure that we get all the employees we need, but it's a concern.
Okay. Thank you.
I see no other further questions. Would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried six.
Next, we have Resolution 18-560, approve transfer of jurisdiction and maintenance of portions of three separate county highways from Winnebago County. I see no one in the audience that wants to speak to this, so, I'll...
No one is registered.
They've been registered. I'll bring it back to the council for a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Councilmember Herman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Robbie, just, just a brief, you want to just highlight what, what we're adding to our system, and is it really adding a lot more to our staff for work?
Yeah, the three county highway sections in question tonight are County Trunk Highway I, which is Oregon Street, from 24th Avenue to Walcott Avenue, County Trunk Highway K, which is 20th Avenue from South Park to Oakwood Road, and County Trunk Highway E, which is Whitsell Avenue from Keller Street to West Haven Drive.
Okay.
These, all three of these sections are, they're urban streets. They're not, you know, your typical county highway rural section. They are urban streets already. One of the primary reasons for this is state statutes limit the county's responsibility when a highway has been urbanized to just the center portion, so we are already bearing a lot of responsibility on the maintenance of these highway sections. There is also a lot of confusion with our development community as to where they need to go to get a working right-of-way permit on these sections that are, you know, to drive down them, you think, you know, I'm in the city. Why do I need to go to the county to get a permit? So, we've had some confusion. So, bringing these into our full control will help alleviate some of that confusion that we've been working on trying to sort through as well.
Okay. I just, so, we'll be moving our city limits sign to a little farther, maybe, or?
Well, the, the city limits, this doesn't affect the corporate boundary at all.
Okay.
In fact, one of the reasons for doing this is because the, all the properties on each side of these county highways are already within our corporate boundaries. So, again, they're city properties on each side of them, but the highway, the, the street section was still under maintenance and permit responsibility of the county. So, that's where a lot of the confusion was lying, is, you know, hey, my property's in the city, why do I go to the county for a permit?
Sure.
So, they're already in our corporate boundaries. And as I said, we're already have a lot of maintenance responsibility for them. And, you know, some of the areas that, you know, between our streets division and county highway, we kind of trade a little bit on like snowplow routes and things like that, where, you know, it's easier for us to get this stretch if you guys can get that stretch. So, you know, we'll, we'll reevaluate some of those as well. But, you know, this is really, these are urban streets. They're completely within our corporate boundary. It just makes sense to have us have that responsibility.
All right. Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, would you please take the role?
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Pack?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is Resolution 18-561, adopt 2019 city budget. And first, I'd like to thank Mr. Roth and his staff for the amount of hours they put into getting the budget ready for tonight. Certainly, Finance Director Larson has spent untold hours preparing the budget, and I'm speaking, I'll speak a bit for Mr. Herman and my colleagues to my left. It gets smoother and smoother every year, the process. And Mr. Herman and I first started, it was kind of a nightmare.
It was midnight, 1:00 in the morning.
Yeah, nightmare, midnight. And also, you know, the council members, you know, we were in, we had six sessions, two of which were full-day sessions. Some council members had to, you know, use vacation time or take time off from, from work to work on the budget workshop. So, it's, it's been a really, I would think, just a really group or team effort to bring the budget to the point where we are tonight. So, with that...
First of all, thank you very much. We staff, I know Ms. Larson, she's put in a lot of hours, but by our count, council put in 25 hours of workshop time into this preparation of the budget document. There's a big culmination here. So, the culmination begins with Exhibit A, that is, it was in your packet. This is the latest and greatest of the input that we received from the, the final budget work session. Items 1 through 10 are reflected in the resolution before you. So, that's the starting point. If you're comfortable where you're at this point, those are already in. There were a couple other items that were suggested by council members. Those are items 11 and 12. Those would be appropriate to amend the, the resolution before you, and that's at council's discretion. So, 1 through 10 are already in. You don't need to make a, an amendment to that. We've included that. And so, that's, that's kind of where we're at. These are all the items that were, from staff standpoint, were consensus items from the council meeting workshop last Wednesday evening. So, if you have any questions about those, before you put it on the, on the table, or if you want to put it on the table, we can answer questions. It's, it's at your leisure. And department heads have moved, grabbed up, gravitated towards the front. I appreciate that. I turned around, there they are. So, if you have any questions regarding operating, and then later on for item 26, the capital budget, we're here to answer any final questions you might have.
So, we are looking now for a motion for the...
Resolution 561 would be in order, and that includes items 1 through 10.
So moved.
But if we do that, before we go there, if we do that, then we adopt the budget, how do we add 11 and 12 if we want? That would be amendments...
That would be amendments to that resolution.
To the amendment that we already approved.
You're...
Or could we add it before we approve it?
That's entirely up to you, but you got a motion on the floor.
Yeah, make the motion to put the resolution on the floor, then you would make a motion to amend the budget to include items 11 or 12, or both, or however you want to.
All right, just... So we have a motion. We now need a second. Second. There is no one here other than staff, so bring it back to the council for discussion. Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I just have a little comment to make, and then I'll, I guess, discuss any potential changes after that, and let my fellow council members speak before any amendments. I guess a little bit about the budget tonight for the public. You know, no budget's perfect. I think everyone up here would probably like to see a few things added and a few things removed, and I think staff feels the same way. But to what Mr. Mayor said a few moments ago, this represents months of hard work by department heads, the finance team led by Director Larson, as well as Mr. Roloff. So for that, thank you for your efforts. As a first-timer through the process, it was good. I appreciate walking me through it and all the help department heads gave and all the input, and I appreciate it. So thank you from me as well. Some of the driving forces of this budget, continued reductions in state aid, state funding, increased costs for road construction and salt and fuel, and payroll and benefits. Those are some of the driving forces behind this, and this is a good budget. This, there's, I don't like to use the term, but there's not a lot of fluff here. This is, this is a pretty good budget for the City of Oshkosh, and they should feel good about the value they're getting for their dollar. With that, for any changes or amendments that I would like to make, I won't move it at this point, but a couple comments. The rental inspection part that's included in the package that's on the floor, I'm concerned that council members are approving that or including that when it hasn't been discussed as to what will be a part of that package or that inspection program. So $25,000 may be the right number. It may not be, as well as we haven't even discussed the effectiveness of that program. So putting $25,000 into the budget is a concern for me without having, obviously, I was part of the process, but several of my other council members haven't been maybe properly informed as to what that program might be. Secondly, the contingency for police, I'm wondering if there's any support or any discussion as to trying to add in the full-time firefighter that was part of the original enhancement packages that we discussed. That's roughly $80,000 with a potential $30,000 overtime offset. And wondering if there's any movement or any thoughts as to that. I think it's important for the fire department to get that extra full-time firefighter. And maybe if we were to delay the start date of the potential police addition, that would allow for $50,000 to be moved towards the firefighter fund or the firefighter full-time employee. And, you know, maybe the potential police sergeant, I believe it was, might start six months into the year, or, you know, August or September. With that, I'll turn it back to the mayor.
We have a motion. We have a second.
Correct.
I see no one else wants to discuss. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just respond regarding the rental inspections program. I would argue that we have seen some improvement and some results from this program. And where the rental housing advisory board is and where council has been informed, at least maybe not at the specific geography, they have been made aware of what the intention is and are aware of what we've done so far. So I would just respectfully disagree with Councilmember Mugrower on that point and hold that we do keep that rental inspections $25,000 in.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Larson, to Councilmember Mugrower's suggestion of pulling some money out of the contingency fund, moving it over to possibly hiring a firefighter, would that, how would that affect the levy restraint? Do we know?
So truly, where you're at, and it would depend how you're going to act on 11 and 12. You have $67,500 of expenditures that are in 11 and 12. Anything beyond that would put us over the limit for expenditure restraint.
And if we go over the limit, we lose, what, $1,005,000?
$1,300,000, yes.
$1,300,000.
Item 12 is really a funding source, an alternative funding source, so that wouldn't have an expenditure restraint change. It would have a levy change. Item 12, or, excuse me, item 11, the purpose of that is to get us right up against the cap and have us, give us capacity for next year, and that was the discussion that the mayor and I had. What I heard Councilmember Mugrower say is that he was suggesting that the contingency police be, for lack of a better term, contingency police and fire. That's, that's, that's what I thought I heard him say. So that would have no impact on expenditure restraint, if my interpretation's correct. If it's, I want to add a firefighter in addition to the contingency for police, then it would have an expenditure restraint.
I think he made a mention of reducing the contingency for police, like $50,000, and then offsetting towards the cost of firefighter, which we would have to add another $30,000, $35,000, I believe, somewhere.
If I, can I clarify?
Sure.
So right now, as part of the package, $117,000 is in a contingency police, under contingency for police. My request or my suggestion might be to reduce the contingency for police by exactly $49,550, using that amount of money, then, to fund a full-time firefighter. So giving the police contingency fund, then, I didn't do the math, but $70,000 roughly. I'd like to add a full-time firefighter and reduce that police contingency. And if it allows, then, the chief to add that sergeant, I think it was a sergeant position we were discussing halfway through the year, we might be able to get two birds with one stone there. But it would have no expenditure restraint change. It would be moving dollars from one to another. And then, do we need to, before we, before we would move on it, 12 with the different funding source, does the, does staff want to discuss that? Because that has an impact on if we change anything up above, because it's a different funding source.
This came up after there was some discussion about use of fund balance and not use of fund balance. And Ms. Larson and I looked at it and said, technically, that is a one-time expenditure. So it doesn't necessarily, so that does fall under that category of an appropriate use of fund balance, if you wanted to do that. The council, at the very end of the discussion of the operating budget, had strong support for Jackson Street, and that's why it was reflected in number 10. But as, we felt we needed to at least throw it out there. Jackson Street's in. If you adopt it without any amendments, Jackson Street's in. We're just taxing for it. As opposed to doing that, one option is just to use fund balance. It's not a significant amount, and it's consistent with practices that are, that are good budgeting practices. So that's why we threw it out there.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. So in regards to that, Councilmember Mugrower, I got to be honest, I'm not entirely sure what I think about that. I think if we wanted to, you know, fund a full-time position, I think we should have looked at probably the entire budget to see where there would be other money coming from. I think, you know, we've had plenty of discussion, and my only fear, and I know where you're coming from, it comes from a good place. And I think, in theory and on paper, it sounds good, but I think the reality is, then you've got two departments, well, all the departments work very closely together, but especially those two that are essentially in competition for those dollars. And I think, I'm not sure that's the message that I want to send to our departments. Again, I, in some ways, Councilmember Mugrower, I, I see where you're coming from, but I don't know that I like the approach.
I see no other council member wanting to, Councilmember Mugrower.
Let me, I guess, what is my fellow council member's thoughts as to using one-time fund balance for the corridor plan instead of putting it on the levy? If we didn't do that, if we used fund balance for that item, as the staff is possibly suggesting as an alternative revenue source, we only need another $12,000 to get that full-time firefighter, then, if you're using the offset.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
By using the offset, you're referring to the delay in the patrol sergeant start?
It would still delay it a little bit by $12,000, so removing that contingency, or moving that contingency from 117 down to roughly 105. But I don't know what my fellow council member's thoughts as to using fund balance for that particular expenditure.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just one observation, just, there's always different moving parts. The expenditure restraint becomes a moving part. We have about $30,000 of cap room, so by using Jackson Street, using contingency for Jackson Street, that frees up 37.5 in taxing, but not 37.5 in spending. So just, it's, that's why we're here.
Yep.
That was going to be my question to you. There are certain advantages to going right up to the limit in future years.
You've got $30,000 in play for expenditure restraint. So I want to make that clear. That's why, that's why the contingency part that we talked about. If you make no adjustments at all, staff would still agree with what the mayor had originally put in about the contingency, because that gets us right up against the cap, and then we'll be okay. If you want to use it for something else, that's council's discretion. Our only thought is, get it up to the max so that you're okay. So hopefully, that answers, or at least lays that concern.
Councilmember Herman.
Could you re, all right. You said if we approve the resolution as is, that 37.5 is in the budget, but then we would be taking it out of the budget if we use the contingency fund to fund the corridor plan?
We're, as proposed, we are taxing for the corridor plan.
Okay.
If you want to, effectively dropping it a penny, which is, every penny counts, literally. If you want to just use fund balance, then you're going to drop the tax rate a penny. So that saves on tax rate, but it doesn't do anything for expenditure restraint.
Expenditure restraint, okay.
Sorry. I know there's, you know, you poke a balloon and another part pops out, and that's really what we're at this point.
And I appreciate the clarification, too. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
I guess, just following up on the discussion and to Councilmember Allison Osby's point, I understand the desire Councilmember Mugrower was expressing, but as we talked about in the lengthy discussions at budget hearing, I believe, at least my interpretation of the rest of council, was that we wanted to do something now, and that included with police and with fire, but we also wanted to wait to go on additionally after some of those staffing and facility studies came back. So I guess I would not really be in favor of reducing that amount on the contingency for police and the delayed offset at this time.
Well, it doesn't sound like I have much support for an amendment to it, so I will, I will not be making an amendment or a motion to amend.
City Clerk, do we, what is our next step?
First thing, if you want to make any motions to amend 11 or 12, 11 and 12 are not in play unless council introduces them. And I'm not doing it to steer you one way or the other, but if you adopted the budget and said, what about 11, then I'd say, well, you didn't add them. So 11 and 12 are, you're going to need an amendment to the motion.
Each one.
For each one, at your discretion, of course. That's up to you.
Councilmember Herman.
I'll make a motion to add, I guess, number 11 on classified, adding $30,000 to the contingency fund balance.
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Pam.
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
I would now look for a motion on number 12.
I would move to amend and add line item 12.
Second. Any discussion? Councilmember Herman.
Just a question, Mr. Roloff. If we add 12, then we delete 10, is that pretty much what we would be doing? Taking 10 out of the budget that way and adding it with 12?
All you're changing is the funding source.
Okay.
Yeah. And so that'll drop the tax rate by roughly a penny.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I see no other council member wishing to discuss this, so Pam, would you take the roll?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Now, we have to vote on Resolution 18-561, adopt 2019 city budget as amended. Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Next is Resolution 18-562, approve 2018 tax levy. Ms. Larson, is that...
I'll let Trina take over. When you get into the tax world, I am just passing it off to Ms. Larson. She's our expert.
Okay, so with the budget that you have just passed, I do have the updated tax rate. The item that I will inform you on, the tax rate is not completed, and it's not complete right now due to the Department of Revenue has not released the school credit yet. They're releasing on November 16. So we will be adopting our city mill rate and with a to-be-determined once that school tax credit is received. So I have the resolutions available with the amendments that you have just passed.
And what you're getting is what's reflected now in line 12. So the levy is $39,401,600, an increase of 4.07%. She's Trina.
So that resolution is reflective of the updated mill rate with your amendments of $10.59.
Per $100,000?
Excuse me, excuse me, $10.58.
Okay.
Per $100,000?
Per $100,000.
Per thousand? Per thousand.
Per thousand.
Okay. I see no one wishing to speak or ask questions or clarification.
So I would, there's no motion on the floor? I would move to, for the approval of 18-563.
Second. Discussion.
562.
No, it's 563.
563 is what's on my...
Oh, that's the tax rate. The levy is 562. Oh, all right. 562.
All right, then I will move for the, will withdraw the motion to approve 563 and move to approve 18-562.
And I'll second that.
Here's 562, apologize. That's on the wrong one. I got ahead of myself.
So 562 would be reflective of our new tax levies for all of our taxing jurisdictions. This would include the technical college, the county, the school district, both Oshkosh and Winnicott County, and the Algoma Sanitary Sewer District. The first item would be the mill rates of the city of Oshkosh tax bill. The second one would be including the Algoma Sanitary Sewer District, and the third one would be including the Winnicott County School District. Tax levy.
And how does the Winnicott County School District fall into this?
There's a small corner of the city that's in the Winnicott County School District, so that changes the levy for those people just slightly.
Okay.
Because the levy that they collect versus what the levy that the, that's collected by the Oshkosh area school district. You'll see that the Winnicott County levy is a whopping $22, so probably just a single property.
Has it always, it's, well, I guess, okay.
Not much there.
I don't recall it from the past, but.
No, that's.
Threw me off.
If, it looks like.
So motion for 562 would be in order, Mr. Mayor.
It's on the floor.
We have a motion in the second.
Second it, yeah.
The city clerk has her pen in her hand, so would you please take the role?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
Moving on to Resolution 18-563, adopt 2018 tax rates.
So this resolution would include the tax levy as well as the tax rate.
And the tax, the state, the final number subject to the state tax credit, which we are supposed to be receiving in the next two days.
Councilmember Herman.
Okay, on that, on that note, then, could it go up, or will it probably go down?
Oh, it, call the credits, it will absolutely go down. The question is, how much? So we can't.
Just so, so whatever we approve, it won't be higher than this. It would really be lower than this.
It will be lower than this. It's just a matter of what it is. So for the press, it would probably.
Just so the citizens don't all of a sudden go, "Well, wait a minute, you approved it, and now my rate's even higher." I want to make sure that they understand it's actually going to go down from what we approved tonight a little bit.
Correct.
Based on the credits we get from the state. Okay, thank you.
I know we've all asked this question in the past. I'll ask it again. Why does Madison take so long for this? I mean, every city, village is trying to get their budgets put together, and we're all waiting for Madison to give us the information we need to make the best decisions possible for our constituents. We're all nodding. I know it's rhetorical.
Thank you for saying it's rhetorical.
It's a league project.
Well, the league.
I mean, seriously.
Couple of years ago, the league was successful in getting the state to say, "We're going to do a better job," but it was kind of a non-binding, "We're going to do a better job," and here we are again. I mean, three days after we delivered the budget to council, they changed the payment for municipal services, and so we were scrambling around. That's item, that was one of the first items that was on the, on your list, is we had to deal with that issue. So it's an ongoing issue the league's aware of, but just now, people are starting to complain. We heard about the payment for municipal services. A lot of cities get their budgets to their council in their hand. We do it by the first, your first meeting in October. That's pretty much what we've done over the years. A lot of cities get it by October 1, and the week of October 1, we were still getting revenues from the state. We would have had, we would have had more amendments for you. They would have been up and down, some up, some down, but this one, this revenue was down for, for the municipal services program. And this, the state credit, there's no, there's no logical reason why it can't be done.
Yeah, there is. Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Just one quick question, then. Trina, Ms. Larson, do you know what that credit was last year? I mean, are we, we're talking about a 3 cent increase this year. Is it anywhere in that neighborhood that we might be that far ahead with those credits? Or can you tell me, or tell us what that was last year?
So if you, if you look on your resolution under the 2017 column, that credit is listed, it's the $1 and about 73 cents.
So the pre-credit rate last year was 26.806. The pre-credit rate this year is 26,472. So there's about a 33 cent drop, but again, it's subject to that, that credit. If it stays, if it holds at 173, about a 33 cent drop in the rate, which would be great. But if the state credit changes, it's just hard to say. But stay tuned, and hopefully in Friday's newsletter, you'll have, you'll have that information. And I'd ask the press to maybe wait, because that's going to be the real rate that the residents will be looking for, because that's the one they're actually paying.
Thank you.
If there are no further questions, city clerk, please take the role.
Any motion, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd move for approval of 18563.
Second.
We've had our discussion. Would you please take the role?
Paul Mary.
Aye.
Mugrower.
Aye.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carried seven.
It says Resolution 18-564, approve 2019 capital improvement program. Has anyone signed up to speak to this?
No one is registered.
Bring it back to council for a motion in a second.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess first, I think we probably should talk about, the first thing on the Exhibit B from staff, the Compass Way. Maybe I'll pivot back to city manager Roloff, if he wants to dive into that a little bit, and then we can potentially talk about that and funding.
Thank you. The need for Compass Way has really accelerated. The demands that we're getting from, from potential buyers and from Wisconsin Southern Railroad, which is, for all practical purposes, there are, they're becoming a real estate agent for us. They are connecting us with some of their customers that are interested in not only moving product on their rail line, but also having facilities nearby. The imminency of Oshkosh Corp. moving some of their JLTVs from that site is, is coming. They're producing them, they're going to be needing to move them. And to transport product on a gravel road is literally going to beat up that road and hurt our investment. The idea would be to pave it so that we have access to the site on a paved road, and the estimated cost for that is about 1.5 million. With that said, staff is actively working on an Economic Development Administration grant, which would, it would be a matching grant, and that would be to do a little more. We'd still have the $1,005, but it would probably be able to help us finish the road, because the road right now looks like sort of a backwards question mark. The idea is to loop that road back to Clairville. With an EDA grant, we can do the whole thing. If we don't get the EDA grant, we'll have enough to get a road that's right back to the, to the site. But from everything Mr. Davis is hearing from the railroad, it really, they are actively selling properties. They want to buy additional properties from us, and they want to start moving product as soon as possible. And we're, we want to help them as, as much as we can. So this is one of those where we need to do something. So staff had put it in as item one, as a 1.5 million increase. We may or may not come back for an additional change, depending on what happens with the EDA grant. But meanwhile, the councilmember Mugrower has suggested that perhaps we use some of our fund balance. And I, and that, that would be for him to, to talk about, but staff believes that we need to add this. If we knew then, when I say then, if we knew back in July when we were doing the CIP, what we knew now, we would have put it in, and we would have suggested, "We need to add this, and we need to borrow for it." This, all the concept that we've talked about, favorable economic conditions, the, the economy is moving such that they need to move rail, product on rail, and they're looking for us to, for that help. Mr. Davis, is there anything to add?
We're actively working on creating lots that we can bring to council for offers to purchase, probably in the next month or two. So when you say imminent, I believe it's very imminent. And they will expect the, the road to be installed in 2019 to serve tens of thousands of semis.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Just a question on the EDA grant, then. What timeframe is that EDA grant application?
We're trying to get it in, in this last quarter, but EDA is aware that if we don't get it in this last quarter, we'll be in the first quarter of 2019.
And when do they announce?
Those are completely around the calendar.
They're rolling?
Yep, they're rolling.
Okay. And then what is the amount on the EDA grant, matching?
50/50. So in theory, we could ask for another 1.5, make it a $3 million project, but I don't believe we've developed a budget to do everything that Mr. Roloff's described quite yet, because our engineers are working on a lot of projects right now.
So we could potentially even come back above $3 million?
Ooh, it's possible.
The engineers don't want to commit to a number yet, because they're literally just starting to work on the scope of the project.
All right, thanks.
Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Piggybacking off what Mr. Roloff said, it is, it's an important project. We've seen, we've seen what the rail line can marginally do just for the little bit it's open, and the potential for that, that location out there is ripe for, ripe for development, and that project needs to happen. My suggestion for, for funding it, though, I'm not in favor of taking on $1.5 million in, in new debt. I've, I've got concerns with our, our new debt for this, the CIP package before we even saw that. So my suggestion would be to, to use $1 million of general fund balance and do the remaining half million with a bond. That still leaves us above our policy, our general fund policy reserves. It would still be a, a strong number, still over the 16% fund balance that, that council had adopted. But funding that project with cash is a good thing to do. It's less debt, it's less interest, and it goes a long ways to making sure our new debt is, is manageable. So I will be motion, I'll be making a, a motion to amend to include Compass Way, but doing it as number two, general fund balance and a, of a million dollars.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr., I'm not discussing his amendment. Mr. Davis. This industrial park is at, it's in a TIF district, right?
TIF 23.
TIF 23, is that, TIF, is that a, under, underperforming TIF, or is it a, at this point?
At this point, we're still finishing the construction, so we borrowed money, but we don't have increment, because we haven't sold the lots yet.
Okay, so if we start to sell out the lots as anticipated, where does that money then go to? Does that go to the TIF, or could it go to the road construction?
I believe it's supposed to go to the industrial park fund, and that would be something that I'd ask Ms. Larson to follow up on.
Yes, as the lots do sell, we do need to pay back the industrial park fund, which made the initial purchases of the land.
Okay.
The land sales go to the industrial park fund. The increment from the additional building will go to tax increment.
Okay.
But it's going to be a delayed reaction.
And if we do geo-bonding for the whole thing, how, how many years old is that bonding? Is that 10 years?
That would be 20 years for something like this, because the life of the asset's going to be significantly more than 20 years.
Okay, and all the infrastructures in, other than the road, correct? I mean, sewer, water, sanitary is all, all in, correct?
Is there anything else we're planning, Mr. Godey?
Under the original proposed road, yes, it is all in. If we do have to do the extension, we will need to do some modifications to the storm sewer and extend the storm sewer system, and possibly some additional detention.
Okay, and that would happen, as we sell lots anyways, correct? I mean, we would be having to do some of that work no matter what, correct?
With the road extension, we'll have to do it, yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I do have one question for Ms. Larson. There's two proposals here, figuring the work done, which we need done. I mean, we, the sooner the better in 2019, weather permitting. If this is a 20-year bond, we're really looking at $20,18, which will be payable in $20,38. I'm looking at the key on the time value of money, but as a finance director, which of the two do you think, do you feel is the most beneficial long-term for the city of Oshkosh and the taxpayer?
For a long term, and I actually did have this discussion with councilmember Mugrower, I would be very conservative in utilizing fund balance, as it is there for other necessities, emergency declarations, volatility in commodities. If you were to use fund balance, I would use that very conservatively. We currently have about 1.1 million above our fund balance policy, so it's, it's not large. So I would approach any use of it very conservatively, as it is something that is monitored through Moody's, and not meeting that policy could impact our ratings for the city.
Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you. My question to you, Ms. Larson, is in 2018, I don't know if you have this readily available, but how much debt did we pay off through our payments?
I can get that, if you'd just give me.
Yep.
Councilmember Peck.
Well, it's, would be directed to Ms. Larson, so I'll let her.
We can wait.
Address Ms. Allison Osby's request first.
Sure, you know, and, you know, from a checks and balance standpoint, I understand where Mr. Mugrower's coming from. You know, that if, if you have it in savings, it's, you know, it's a good thing to use versus, you know, taking out debt and paying interest, however, for the reasons that Ms. Larson stated, you know, being that we do have a fund balance policy, a million dollars sounds like a lot, but not in the scope of a municipality this size. So I would be uncomfortable taking a million dollars from the fund balance, or really any at this point, to put towards something. And, you know, and obviously, this is a worthwhile project in so many ways, but we also have a lot of worthwhile projects in other parts of the city, and I just don't want to get in a habit of taking from our fund balance for worthwhile projects.
We have the answer to your question.
So the amount that we have retired this year, it, it's about $4 million. It's $3,986,315. So we decreased that amount compared to what we took on in debt.
Right, and, and to Mr. Mugrower's point, you know, the whole goal is to keep paying down that debt, you know, rather than keeping, you know, adding to it. However, again, we have geo-bonds for a reason. This is, this project in particular is, is why. And, and if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Peck, we would be going over what our typical CIP budget is normally, correct, at about 14 million?
Yeah.
So we would be adding an additional 1.5 this year.
Yeah, we're, we started at 11.4, we did an extra million, so we're at 12.4, so another million and a half would get us up to 14, as you said.
Yeah, and that doesn't excite me either to go over our, you know, what we try to, to maintain, but for, again, the reasons that we discussed, I, I do understand why we're making this investment, especially, you know, given the success of the transload facility.
Ms. Larson, again, the two options. Ms. Larson, again, the two options, which will Moody's like us best to make? You know, the role they play is very critical, and...
I do feel fund balance does show financial sustainability and security for the city. They also do look at the amount of debt, of which we do have in the city. We've looked at our comparable communities, and we are one of the higher communities, but I feel that with a debt management plan that we have already successfully achieved, and with a goal of a new target, that does have some offset when speaking with Moody's in regards to our current debt outstanding.
If you were to accept Councilmember Muggerhour's suggestion, how we would play it would be, council gave us direction to limit borrowing, and so we would follow the statement that Councilmember Allison Osby did, want to limit borrowing. If you choose not to go that way, we're going to say we chose to sustain fund balance. So, there's, there's pros and cons to both. Are they magically going to grab onto one versus the other? I really can't say. I don't, they, they're going to look at both. They want a strong fund balance, and they want us to get our debt down. If you brought the packet that we handed out last week, it'll give you a snapshot. Ms. Larson's giving you an idea of what it would look like to fund balance, and we're right up against then our fund balance cap. Now, we're projecting a fund balance increase this year, and we have to let people know that. We don't count on that necessarily. I, I put it in my budget message, but Trina does not necessarily use that. She's waiting. That's not, that's not guaranteed. We still have six weeks left in the fiscal year. She's not going to count on that. Ask her on January 1st, she'll give you the answer. The last two pages that we handed out last week gave you two different debt projections. And remember, and we're very proud of this, we got to that 70% goal two years early, and at the end of 2018, we're going to be at 64.47%. So, we're under 65%. For 2019, if you go with 12.4 million, we'll be down to 62.68%. If you accept the million and a half for Compass Way, we project we'll be at 63.41%. So, it's about a 1% bump. Ideally, we're going to be coming back to you in 2019 with, what's our new fund balance policy going to be? We hit our goal of 70%. What's next? And we're going to be having those discussions. I don't want to get into that detail, because we're going off tracks tonight, but we believe that we need to set a new goal and start working towards that. But that gives you a rough idea. It's about 0.8% bump up in that percentage, if you go along with doing it all by debt. So, it's, it's a horse apiece. I, I can't tell you one is superior to the other. The Moody's folks will, will spin it positively, regardless of which decision you make, and that's what we do. That's our, that's our job.
I think the only, the last item that I would just add to council is, we've, we spoke about favorable economic conditions, and when we were speaking about that, Compass Way had just touched the radar. And now, we look at it tonight, and it's become a gotta-do. If you do fully tap fund balance, that's not the last item that is, could be considered under this favorable economic conditions. There are other items that we are hopeful for economic development, and i-if you were to apply all that fund balance, the what-if for the next item that is going to promote or grow economic development in the city, that's also a contingent factor to consider when tapping that fund balance.
Thank you. Did you?
No, I...
Okay. She answered your question.
Staff recommends you add Compass Way. Council has to decide how they want, how they want to finance it.
We have two options here, so...
We have an amendment on the floor, so we have to vote on that. Do we have a motion yet?
No.
I didn't interpret it as a motion.
Nope. I said I would, and if Mayor will give me the floor, I'll do it.
Councilmember Muggerhour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to amend Exhibit B, or move to amend the CIP to, I'm going to move it to include number two, and we'll see if it goes anywhere. If it doesn't, we can always come back. But to include number two, Compass Way Project, $1.5 million, fund it with $1 million in general fund, and 500 geo-bond, or go bonds.
I asked for a second. It appears that the amendment died for lack of a second.
Councilmember Peck.
I would move to amend Exhibit B to add Compass Way as submitted by staff, and bonding the million and a half for it.
I'll second that.
Pam, would you take the role, please?
Paul Mary. Aye. Muggerhour.
No.
Crowsey.
Aye.
Peck.
Aye.
Herman.
Aye.
Allison Osby.
Aye.
Cummings.
Aye.
Carrie Sixone.
Councilmember Peck.
No, I'm...
Well, you're done.
I'm done.
Councilmember Muggerhour.
Thank you. One more, one last thing. Reason for my, my suggestions to reduce some of the other CIP, as was alluded to earlier, you know, up till this year, your, your kind of stated cap for CIP, or for new debt, sorry, was about 11.4, 11.4 million. This year, we came in at 12.4. So, a million dollars is, is a lot. Now, we're putting 1.5 on top of that, so we're pushing $14 million in new debt, and that seriously concerns me. So, when looking at the CIP, I identified a few of the projects that, while I know they are very important to each of the department heads, I've spoke with all of them, and they are important, but I just have concerns with the total amount of new debt we're taking on, so I proposed removing three, three items, number three, four, and five, taking $458,000 out of the CIP for 2019, and I will move to amend to remove those three items from our CIP program.
Hey, Honored, Lynda, we need to take those one at a time?
No. It's up to council.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
We need a, we need a second first, because it was a motion.
So, the motion is all three basically as a package?
If it assists council, I'd be happy to, to rescind the motion and go one at a time.
Is that the preferred way to do it?
I think it's probably the best way to do it, is one item at a time.
I would be happy to...
Because there's, there, there...
Yep.
It affects three different departments.
I would be happy to rescind that motion, and I would then move to amend Exhibit B, number three, removing $100,000 from the Mountain Park Little Oshkosh Community Playground Replacement Fund.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Herman.
Okay, I'm the council liaison to the Parks Board, and I believe that the Little Oshkosh, when our board met, put that at the top, wasn't it, for 2019, Little Oshkosh?
That's correct.
And we've already previously borrowed $100,000 for that project, correct?
Yes, I believe in 2014.
Okay. And then, there have been several service organizations that have helped fundraise for Little Oshkosh also?
Um, excuse me. Ripfest, I believe their first year, made a contribution to the community foundation to set up a fund for this. Their hope is that future years would be a little more successful, where they could help raise additional funds. Weather-related and other items, the, the funding has slowed down.
Okay. If this amendment would go through, would the project die, or would we be able to move it forward with whatever we have at the Oshkosh area community foundation? Or is that fund mostly for maintenance of the playground?
The amount at the community foundation is pretty minimal. I did not check that today, but I, it's below 25,000. I'd be, I think it was a one-year contribution. So, it's minimal. It would, it's 20% reduction in the funding that we are looking for, so it would be significant. Just to give you an idea on the additional $400,000, we did have that in the previous five-year CIP for a park project. It was going to be for a shelter facility on the north side of Rainbow Park, which we would have also used for storage of golf courts, golf carts, and so forth. So, when we talked to the Parks Board, we felt because it was earmarked in the CIP for a parks project, and Little Oshkosh jumped to the top, we essentially asked to transfer, alter those projects. Based on, you know, also on the question on the community foundation, I've had some preliminary discussions with Carleen and Mr. Wyman, waiting for the budget to pass. We are going to have some fundraising. Our goal is that that would contribute towards the project, but it would be setting up an endowment, maintenance endowment at the foundation, because we're looking at port-in-place rubber surfacing here again, and so in future years, we would not have to hopefully budget for those in, in the city budget. We would be able to utilize funds from the community foundation from the fundraising effort.
Okay. Thank you.
One question for Mr. Mauer. When that was built, what, 19 years ago?
1997.
Was the funding all private? You weren't here then, how was it funded back then? As I recall, it was heavily funded by the community, by different service organizations and so forth.
I was spending about two hours looking through all files today, and unfortunately, our administrative assistant, who was here, probably had that in her head. I believe a lot of it was fundraised by the organization, that all of the rotaries were behind the project, as well as, you know, the entire community, so...
So, in effect...
I can't speak for city dollars, I, I wasn't able to find that again.
So, in effect, we got that playground almost free through, through private donations and fundraising.
That would be my reaction, unless I saw it differently, yes.
Okay, thank you. I do have a question for Chief Smith, but I think you have a question for Mr. Mauer.
Mr. Mauer, so it's my understanding that Little Oshkosh, there was also significant volunteer labor that went into constructing that. It was all volunteer, but the replacement would not involve volunteers, as I understood it?
Correct. When we had been meeting with all the rotary clubs, there was not any interest by the groups jumping, coming forward to help on a community build. It's a large undertaking, as you know from 1997. I also did one in my previous position, and they're very time-consuming, and you definitely need an organization to step forward to spearhead that. A lot of the members of the rotary that I was dealing with were some of the organizers from 1997, and they said they've given once, and we don't have younger individuals stepping up to take this on.
Right, right, sure. And when we say yes to some things that we didn't necessarily plan for, sometimes we have to say no to others, but, so I guess the follow-up to Mr., Councilmember Herman's question, so if this 100,000 came out, and what is still remaining, could that also go into a future year towards this, or does it necessarily have to be applied in this budget cycle to that or something else, or we lose it?
Because it's our top priority for our department, based on safety issues and concerns with things that take place in Little Oshkosh, also the Parks Board being the top priority, I think it's something that needs to be done. I don't feel that we can safely open it up, as it currently is, without doing some removal of many of the pieces, or some alterations, and possibly some additional funding from the operations for the wood fiber underneath for safety surfaces.
So, you're saying, then, that if we don't pass this, that it's not going to open up next spring? It's like a do or die?
I'm not, not completely. I think we would have to make some major renovations, reducing some of the risk factors that are out there, so reducing what is currently out there. But we withheld adding the wood fiber this year, until we knew what the direction of the, the project would go. And I believe that it's about $5,000 to $7,000 of wood fiber that we would need to put in there, just for the safety surfacing.
Thank you.
There are no further questions. Mr. Mauer, Chief Smith, could you come forward, please?
There's, Mr. Mayor, just excuse me. The motion on the floor is only about Mr. Muggerhour's first amendment.
Right, but I think where he's going with it is there were some safety concerns...
Maybe you were talking about the next one? Excuse me. I apologize.
The safety issues, which you expressed, that's one of the budget sessions, as far as the playground as it is, and things that you're, you and your offices are concerned about. Can you, going to repeat those?
No.
It's hard, it's, it's hard to see what's going on besides some of these structures.
Certainly, when, when you have, when you have structures that are closed in, it's, it's difficult for us on a normal patrol route to see what's going on, and in today's times, we, we like openness. It allows us to actively see what's going on within the structures themselves. When, when you look at it from a SEP Ted viewpoint, and you look at it in the sense of, if it's a business, we don't like for people to put signs up on their windows that don't allow us to see in, and if you use that same theory on a playground equipment, we want to see all the way through the equipment, so that we can, we can respond if there's something going on, on the equipment that would be unsafe for, for our community.
And when that was built 20 years ago, the world was a totally different place.
The world was a totally different place back then, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I see no other councilmen wishing to discuss this. Pam, would you please take the role?
Paul Mary.
We're voting on the amendment as Mr., as Councilmember Muggerhour.
Aye. Muggerhour.
Aye.
Crowsey.
No.
Peck.
No.
Herman.
No.
Allison Osby.
No.
Cummings.
No.
Okay, Councilmember Muggerhour.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to amend to delete number four, or delete Steigerwing Entrance Expansion and Renovation Design Phase 1, $225,000 from the nonutility property improvements for the museum.
Mr. Mauer.
I know I didn't do this with, with Mr. Mauers, and I should have, the purpose, I just want to reiterate, the purpose behind these is, is not my lack of support in these projects. I know it can be viewed that way, and it's really, it's debt management, and it's debt, total debt taken on. I know that this one specifically is something important to, to Director Larson, and to the museum, and I fully respect that, and that, that's the driving force behind my, my request on that reduction or removal. So, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Councilmember Peck.
Brad, how would this impact the, the project? It's scheduled to bid the project in 2020. Obviously, there's things in here. There's ADA compliance issues, there's many issues in this.
Museum has a conceptual plan for modifying the Steigerwing, and just to kind of refresh you, the Steigerwing has a lot of functional issues, as well as ADA issues. We've known about it for a long time, so it's really hard to use that building the way it needs to be used as a, as a museum, as well as we have some other preservation issues in the archives. So, we have the conceptual plan, and this design development begins to take that conceptual plan and turn it into a reality, and the design development would be done over two years. So, it would be, would be done in 2019 and 2020. So, it's a, a two-year project to do design development.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. So, the conceptual plan actually started in 2017, according to our CIP book. The strategic plan was at the, in 2012, was that the museum's strategic plan, or is that part of the city's strategic plan? Do you know?
Well, the museum is part of the city's strategic plan, but...
Right, so that was part of that. And you anticipate with the upgrades that you'll get 30-plus years or more out of the, out of the museum?
Yes.
And as Councilmember Peck mentioned, and I think you did too, bathrooms don't comply to ADA currently, correct?
Well, we do, and we have, our bathrooms are in the basement, we have two small bathrooms in the basement, which are pretty much inadequate when we get a large group of people, so...
Okay.
That's a, that's a really major issue. We also don't have any loading dock or freight elevator.
Okay.
Just kind of a general, general comment, you know, businesses in the communities that fail to invest in the future, in the quality of their products or communities... We have, we have taken strides over the last almost decade to really invest heavily in the quality of life in this community. And a museum or an art center or a park are things that people come to a community for. They spend money, they put heads in beds. And I think, people are looking at Oshkosh totally differently than they did a decade ago. And I think to stop investing on these quality-of-life amenities in our, our city are, is a way to kind of, for us to slide backward. So I would not support reducing these dollars at all. I mean, it's, you're, you're, like most of the city buildings, we're dealing with very old structures that have very significant problems right down, you know, the City Hall is not ADA compliant. You have the same problems. But we've got to keep investing in the quality of this, of life in this community. It's Crowsey.
Couple of thoughts and concerns. The two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand is for the design concepts. The actual renovation is very substantial and I just have a concern of how are we going to raise that fund? How long is it going to take? And I just see throwing two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand potentially at this right now. It could be twenty years before we do a renovation if it costs millions of dollars. And at that point, maybe the, the planning needs to be redone again in ten or twenty years whenever we'd have the funds if we ever would. And I just want to know kind of, what's your plan of, how would we raise these funds for the actual renovation?
Well, I don't dispute that at all. It might be a while before we get the money for this. However, we have a range now. The conceptual plan is kind of like the big idea and we won't be able to refine that unless we actually get into design development. And once we're in design development, that's when we really get into the nitty-gritty and we can decide exactly what that building is going to cost, what it's going to be. And I'm assuming that we would, the museum would raise part of that. We have about three-hundred thousand dollars now that we've raised, just kind of quietly raised it. And the city would also give a portion. And, and the time schedule for that would be, yet to be determined.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
Sorry, I meant to take that one back after Mr. Crowsey. He asked my question, so sorry about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is more of a general comment. I'm going to not support the amendment. I think it's important, too, that we continue to, to keep our city facilities up to date and, and as modern as possible. As the council rep to the Convention Visitors Bureau Board, I phoned out last night that they're hosting a FAM tour, which is, is tour buses. And they're hoping to bring tour buses back to the city of Oshkosh and put some package deals together. They're going to do actually an event at the Howard next month where they're inviting twenty different tour bus company developers to come to Oshkosh, see the changes in Oshkosh, see all the different things. And they're putting them up free of charge at the Best Western overnight and they're going to go to a play at the Howard. So I think it's important that we continue to invest like we did in Little Oshkosh, like we do with the Convention Center, the museum, all our city-owned facilities. And it's going to drive these people into Oshkosh and they're going to, you know, if we can get the tour bus companies to come back into Oshkosh and, and go to the museum and go to the library, go to EAA, go to some different facilities, stay overnight, go to something at the Grand. I think it's a win-win for the city. And we are event city and we need to continue to support that. And I think supporting a museum is one way. Sure, it's going to be very expensive remodeling, but when you look at the information that we provided, it lacks essential restrooms. Design's not conducive to all functions and operations that occur there. Admissions, information, orientation, sales, the whole operation comes out of this part of the building. I think we'd be making a huge mistake if we don't continue to invest in our city-owned facilities. So I'm not going to support the amendment.
Deputy Mayor Palmary.
Thank you, Mayor. It's really painful being up here sometimes and in having to address favored, loved establishments in the city. My children, my grandchildren have experienced some great memories at, at the museum. But to Councilmember Muggerauer and Crowsey's point, you know, this, sometimes I just wish the vote was not now, not a yes or a no, but not now. And because of the significance of what we're looking at, it's not a question of whether or not we should or shouldn't invest in our quality of life because that is important. But when we say yes to things that come up unexpectedly, sometimes that means we have to say no. And so I will be supporting the amendment.
One question. The museum, at least the Sawyer Home, was a gift to the city of Oshkosh.
Correct.
And the Steigerwing, if memory serves me, it was a lot of private donation that built the Steigerwing back.
Thirty-five years ago, correct.
Thirty-five years ago. So other than the annual money the city has to spend on the facility, most of it has been a gift to the city.
It was before my time, but I don't have it.
Yeah, I know. Okay, that was my point. That facility prime has been a, basically a gift to the city of Oshkosh, to the citizens of Oshkosh. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Allison Osby.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, you took the words out of my mouth. And that is one of, one of the things that comes when, you know, municipality or city takes on gifts is at some point you do have to invest in that gift, kind of like the playground or whether it be the museum. I don't disagree with Ms. Palmary and, and my other two colleagues as well that are in support of cutting this, but I think it goes back to, you know, we've seen just with, whether it's City Hall, the Grand would be a great example, the library. At some point, there's no expense, especially when it comes to studies or things that prep us for actual remodel, nobody wants to spend that money. But it's a fact of life if we're going to own quality-of-life assets. It's, it's just part, part of the deal. And, and my experience has been in serving in the capacity for the last seven and a half years is that usually when we go through these types of processes, sometimes we come across things that we find out need to be addressed. And we would rather, we would rather know about those things ahead of time than like a situation with the Grand.
And the roof was caving in.
Exactly. And of course, I, you know, I'm not saying that's, that's what's happening here, but again, it's all part of and why we started the strategic plan a while ago and why we've been diligent at it. And again, going back to the point that, you know, obviously, none of the seven of us decided to, to take a gift thirty-five years ago, but there should have always been that thought process along the way that we are going to make investments in them. So there's never going to be a good time. So in order to, to approve it, to move forward, I'm not going to support cutting it.
I see no other councilmember wishing to make a statement or question this amendment. Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary. Aye. Muggerauer?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
No.
Herman?
No.
Allison Osby?
No.
Cummings?
No.
Lost three-four.
Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have one last one. I have a feeling I know how this one's going to go too, but we're still going to do it. Amend to remove line number five, Crime Scene Response Unit, Police Department, one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. It's actually one-thirty-one to the, to the city contribution. Once again, I know Chief Smith says he needs this and as part of my going through the budget and trying to identify some offsets to, well, to offset the increase that, that we've had to our new debt, this was one of the things I found, this is the last thing that I proposed. And so the motion's on the floor.
We have an amendment, a motion.
Yeah.
We need a second. The motion dies for no second. Which brings us back to Resolution eighteen-five-sixty-four, approve 2019 capital improvement program. It's been so long ago, do we have a motion?
Has amended.
Has amended, yeah. Has amended.
Yes.
Would you please take the roll?
Paul Mary? Aye. Muggerauer?
No.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Peck?
Aye.
Herman?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Cummings?
Aye.
Carry six-one.
Next, we have council discussion, direction to city manager and future agenda items. We have a future workshop, it's Performance Measurement Team Workshop, December eleventh at five PM.
Nothing to add with that, Mr. Mayor. It's just going to be the key performance indicators that we've been working on and present to council.
Excuse me, one second. Would that be here or in the safety building?
This will be right here. Oh, I'm sorry.
December eleventh.
Yeah, that's, that's further on in the agenda, but you're absolutely right.
It'll be next door.
It'll be in SB one. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, we, all the public meetings have to move over there and we'll be talking about that in a moment.
We have City Hall and Parks Facility Workshop in January of next year. We need to...
We had talked about this at the last meeting, but we didn't set a date or anything. Staff believes we're going to need one hour for each of those. So I think councilmember, what I heard was the off weeks were not exactly preferable, so trying to do it the week of is more preferable. Your options are do it the day after the first meeting, Wednesday, or we could do one of the workshops at five o'clock and the other one, pretty much within the confines of the, the regular council meeting. Now, the downside to that is even though we don't have, I can't tell you exactly what we're going to have on the eleventh, I believe it's, is it the eleventh of January? Yeah. Eighth, excuse me. The eighth of January, it will be four weeks from our previous meeting. Just to give you a flavor, usually volume does pick up. It may not necessarily be of a, any kind of major nature, but you'll have a voluminous agenda regardless. Probably a big consent, but you will have an agenda that you'll have to contend with. Do you want it in the confines of the meeting or do you want to look at another day? It's, it's really up to council. Then that would be either January seventh, which is an SAB meeting night, or, or the day after.
Counsel, it's your pleasure.
Is it possible to do both workshops on, on an off night, so to speak?
That's, if you were going to invest in one night, you might as well do that. Just don't pick the twenty-third of January. I finally can make a herd game. Perhaps the ninth, we could do it on, we could do it on the ninth? No. Can't do it on the ninth? I'm not available on the ninth. But I, I do support doing it on and off, council night because all the years I've been on, anytime we do a workshop in front of a council meeting, feels like it's so rushed.
It is.
And the councilmember Peck's job situation where he has to travel quite a bit, five o'clock meetings he's not even going to make, that's not fair to him.
And I won't be available on the fifth.
And so I just think that, how about the sixteenth? That's a Wednesday, January sixteenth. And I, you know, we could start at six and you say an hour, we could do two hours. We did two-hour budget meetings, so an hour for each, each presentation or forty-five minutes with Q and A and move to the next one. Sixteenth, I mean, yeah, you could do one on the eleventh, one on the sixteenth or do both of them on the sixteenth. It's... No, you don't do it eleventh, that's a Friday. I'm sorry, the eighth. Excuse me.
Let's do both of them on the sixteenth and do it at five-thirty. I can make it. I can adjust my schedule.
I agree. Let's get them both done on the same night. There's no reason not to.
So five-thirty. With, I appreciate that, five-thirty on the sixteenth, that sounds great.
January.
With that, I want to tell, I owe council an apology. You don't have the FGM report because we haven't had it finalized yet. I took the, I took advantage of the fact that the mayor and I were going through the exhibit hall at the LEED conference and the mayor had an opportunity to meet with the FGM folks and pretty much describe it. I can describe the report, but I don't have the report. And I know that some of the media's picked it up because I did talk to some member of the media about it because my memory on it was pretty good, but I didn't give it to council and that's not appropriate and I apologize for that. I've asked FGM to get it as soon as possible to you and Mr. Urban reached out to FGM about getting it done. There weren't a lot of major changes. That's why I felt comfortable talking about it, but without you having a hard copy, that's on me and I take, I take responsibility for that. I'll get it to you as soon as possible.
And FGM was doing the facility, the City Hall.
The City Hall one, yes.
City Hall one. I guess, can I just back up to the performance measurement? So are we talking about doing both the City Hall and Parks Facility Workshops with performance measurement? Is that what we were referring to, putting them on the same date?
January, I heard January's...
No, the one's on the eleventh and one is on the...
I heard January sixteenth at five-thirty.
Is the second one.
The City Hall is one, one report, Parks Facility is another report.
Right, so we'll bring, you'll get them back-to-back, two different consultants, but facility-based.
And then I also wanted to ask, so typically when we have workshops, we're not getting materials until that night. Is it possible that for the performance measurement and for the City Hall that we would have materials or at least a preview prior to that to make a little more efficient use of time in the workshop?
I'll let Mr. Fitzpatrick answer the performance measure one because that's in his wheelhouse.
I might be able to answer both of them.
At least a week.
So it's my understanding, Performance Measurement Team is going to meet, I talked to Courtney Jenks and Chief Smith is the lead coordinator for that project. It's my understanding you're going to meet on Thursday. They're going to have a presentation to city manager Roloff and I and tweak that presentation and then hopefully soon after that we could get that out to the council. And in regard to the facility study, John Urban and I had a conference call this morning with FGM and we are hoping to potentially meet city manager Roloff to finalize the report next week, Tuesday afternoon. And if that's the case and city manager Roloff approves it, hopefully we can get it out to you sooner, as soon as possible, pending what sort of adjustments need to be made.
So, yeah, just...
No later than December first on that. I'll push to get that done. I, there wasn't a heck of a lot of changes anyway, so we can get that to you. I want you to have a lot of time to read that. That's not something you can get even on a Friday. That, that wouldn't be fair to you.
Well, and I guess I would just remind council, too, that if we, you know, we're looking at that workshop on December eleventh and December eleventh is also a council meeting and then we have a closed session for regarding city managers review after, so drink your Voltein.
I certainly want you in a good mood.
Councilmember Herman, did I forget to...
No.
Turn you off or just something?
You could take, take me off of that.
Okay.
Did we have a closed session on the twenty-seventh?
December eleventh.
I have it in here.
I have it.
We have one on the twenty-seventh and then delivery, actually.
So we're canceling that one.
We have the twenty-seventh, my apologies, December eleventh is when I'll have the one-on-one. Never mind. My apologies.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, we have number twenty, is request, Mr. Peck?
No, no, it's, I'm just getting in for the next one.
Request staff and long-range finance committee to analyze physical impact of potential changes to special assessment policy using a possible vehicle registration fee as a funding source.
This was just formalizing what was discussed last week. It was a workshop, it wasn't a formal action, but a direction to staff. My understanding and the only clarification I want, our intent was to notice it in the event that councilmembers showed up, but it was not intended to be a joint meeting, but we'll advertise it as the council member, a quorum of council may be there. There's two councilmembers on the committee, councilmembers Peck and Muggerauer. One more person shows up, we'd have to notice it anyway. So we'll plan to notice it, but it's not intended to be a joint meeting where we're expecting council to be there.
And, and this is to review the markup of the special assessment policy?
Yeah, and that's, our goal is to get you a red line version and you start working from that.
Jay, I did touch base with you last week on, on some red lines I'd like to make.
Yep, and so we'll have, I think the idea is we'll have some versions that'll be out there and some of the items you suggested we'll put in there.
Okay, thank you.
This is the second opportunity for citizens to make statements to the council, but I see only staff and Tom back there. So we'll move on to councilmember announcements and statements. I just have one thing to say and it's not on here, but I want to thank the churches in Oshkosh and Reed... in Oshkosh and Reed School for ringing their bells on this past Sunday at 11:00 AM to commemorate the 100th anniversary of the ending of World War I. So, it was, it was pretty neat. We found out in this whole process that most churches don't have bells anymore. So, it was a lot louder 100 years ago.
Can I jump in here, too?
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I'd just like to throw something out there. Congratulations to Chris Larson at Beckett's, who was named the Restaurateur of the Year by the Wisconsin Restaurant Association. Chris is a great asset to have for the city of Oshkosh and is a supporter of Oshkosh, and just, it's great to hear somebody from Oshkosh recognized for what they do. And I want to thank Chris for everything he's done for Oshkosh, and congratulate him on the award.
Councilmember Herman.
Thank you. Just one last item. I want to thank the bid board for the great job they did last night on the holiday parade. It started on time, ended on time. It was awful cold out there, so I want to thank all the different bands, Oshkosh High, West was there, Oshkosh North, Louarts, I think Winnicottany was also in the parade. And so, it was a great job, it was their first year putting on the parade, and I think it went off very well. So, I just want to give kudos to the bid for a great job.
And the tree lighting went on without a hitch.
So, that's city putting all that together.
I lit the tree.
Yeah.
A scooter and I lit.
I'm just hoping they don't reschedule the parade again because of a Packer game, because it's had a domino effect on some other community events, some middle school band concerts and that.
Mr. Roloff, it's your turn to...
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Before I forget, we did a soft launch of our website last week. I know there were a few little glitches. We're still working through those. If you have any navigation issues, because you're not familiar with the new page, please contact Mr. Newman. We're going to put in the newsletter, and we'll get it out and start getting that information out. Police Department locker room renovations is going through, and we would like to invite council members to contact Chief Smith at their leisure. We would like to get you in before the locker rooms in use for obvious reasons. So, and the idea is to have it operational by December 1st, so if you want to see it, you got about a week and a half, two weeks to go get a look at it, and then it's closed and locked up, sorry. Third quarter financials are in your packet. There's real no surprises. We are tracking well for year-end estimates, although Ms. Larson looks at it on a daily basis when we turn the corner in December. And so, we'll be looking at that as that goes on. For 2019 capital improvements, we've already engaged Professional Services Industries to start our geotechnical work for our 2019 CIPs. Oshkosh Corp update is in there, is in your packet. I know some council member indicated an interest in getting a tour, and we're, I guess we're working on that, and if any council members want to do that similar to, well, it's not like the locker rooms, there isn't a drop-dead date for that, but certainly, if you want to do it, contact Mr. Davis. His staff will get you in the right direction.
Actually, the tour took place yesterday.
Okay.
On the coldest day so far this year.
I prefer the summer, myself.
I'll wait till it's done.
It was short, just one of the hard hat kind of progress tours.
Deputy Mayor, be careful what you ask for. You'd ask for...
And thank you to Kelly Nyforth and the other, and Myron Construction and Oshkosh Corporation for a quick response to setting that up. I wasn't expecting it so quickly, but we also had someone drive us, so that made things a little more comfortable.
Glad to hear that. And then, as some, as Deputy Mayor Palmary mentioned, all meetings, all public meetings after the adjournment of this meeting tonight, for the next six weeks, will be held over at the Public Safety Building. The elevator at City Hall will be out of service, therefore, we cannot comply with Americans with Disabilities Act. And so, the, there are three rooms over at the Public Safety Building, SB for Public Safety Building, 1, 2, and 3, the council meetings, and the larger public meetings will be held in SB 1. It's one of the old courtrooms, and I think some of you had a chance to go over there. If not, you're welcome to go over there. Well, Mr. Urban can get you over there and get you a look-see at it, but our next council meeting on December, excuse me, November 27th, we'll be at that meeting. If you come here, their first hint will that you'll be walking up the stairs, that you're going to the wrong place. So, hopefully, you'll know that to go to SB 1. And we will be pushing it on social media throughout the Thanksgiving weekend to remind people that we're doing that. And we'll continue to do that through the month of December. And then, we have our Welcome to Oshkosh video. I believe this one is going to be Public Safety, is that right, Scott? No. Neighborhoods, okay. Neighborhoods, excuse me. And we have two more after this one that we'll be rolling. Thank you, Scott.
Oshkosh, Wisconsin is a welcoming community, and its residents value building relationships with one another. Oshkosh is committed to strengthening and supporting neighborhoods through a variety of resources and programs available to recognize neighborhood associations, such as the One Oshkosh Initiative and Greater Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhoods Incorporated. The Oshkosh Healthy Neighborhood Alliance focuses on building awareness of the benefits of neighborhoods. Connecting with neighbors is an important part of creating a strong culture of neighborhoods. The police and fire departments are active in Oshkosh neighborhoods, giving residents the comfort and tools to increase the safety of their neighborhood. City staff works hard to provide the tools necessary to maintain and improve parks, landmarks, and other projects in neighborhoods. Through the creation and support of neighborhoods, Oshkosh works together to ensure fun, engaging, inclusive, and safe places for families of all ages and walks of life to call home.
Very nice job.
Very nice job.
Where's Scott?
Nice job.
And that's my report on that note.
We'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. It's hard to believe it's only a week away. And with that, I would like the motion to adjourn.
Someone?
Second?
In favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.
Do you want us to leave our budget books?[1766.02]